We're sitting right at 5:30, 5 hour, and I would like to call the August 22nd, 2023 council meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk, please, call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Ms. Mount?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
All right, we do have a quorum, so at this time, we can proceed with our public comments. And I will recognize who has signed up, which will be Mr. Coach Rob Manchester. If you will, please come to the front.
Good evening, how you doing? On behalf of Lieutenant General William B. Caldwell IV in Georgia Military College, I'm Rob Manchester. I'm the athletic director and head football coach there at the junior college. And the purpose of me being here today was just want to invite each and every one of you to our Meet Your Bulldogs event, which is this Thursday, August the 24th, at 5:15 over by Davenport Field. And it's for a community pep rally for our junior college football team. Just a couple of quick facts. Our junior college football team, we're the only junior college football team in the state of Georgia, so we are Georgia's junior college football team, but more importantly, we're Milledgevilles. We got a lot of, obviously, our prep schools that we're extremely proud of with John Milledge and Baldwin County and GMC Prep, but we are also extremely proud of our junior college athletes. And we, this is the first time in our history that we now have representative from each of our prep schools. We have two graduates from GMC, Caleb Bush and Tyler Saunders. We have two from Baldwin County, German Simmons and Antonio Reeves Jr. and John Milledge and Balin Zalinski. When we kind of revamped our, our model with the football team kind of getting out of the cadet corps, and not that that was a bad thing, but COVID changed a lot, and hopefully we're all past that now, but we have a roster of 114. And we were like, well, if we're going to go out in the state and promote us as being Georgia's only junior college, then we need to have a junior college team with pretty much nothing but Georgia players. We took no resources to go out of state. We recruited our state heavily, and we have 97 out of our 114 are all from Georgia and have several from the surrounding community. So we really feel like we're embedding ourselves to be Milledgevilles and Georgia's junior college football team. Would love for you to come out. Wish I could make it a little bit cooler on Thursday night, but they're going to have a lot for the kids, so if you have kids or grandkids, love for you to come out. It's at 5:15 to about 7:15-ish or so, and we'll try to get in and out quick because of the, of the weather, but appreciate the opportunity to come speak on behalf of Georgia Military College and our football team, and thank you so much. Per your questions, if you've got any, I'll be happy to answer them. If not, I do appreciate your time.
First game?
Thank you.
First game's going to be this weekend, August the 26th, at 1 o'clock. If you come, we can definitely try to get you in the Bulldog Room and maybe some air conditioned, but I guess the game must go on, but so hopefully we get in and out of there pretty quick. That's our first game. We do have seven home games this year. Should have brought a schedule, sorry I didn't, but it's all online, but love for you to come to any games that you can, and thanks so much for letting me have the time again.
Thank you.
I didn't hear you mention Tamarion Hudson, that's my family.
Marion Peters?
Yeah.
Oh, he is from Putnam. I got two from Putnam, sorry about that. We got two from Putnam County, Tamarion Peters and Darrell Bland. Got one from Washington County. I'm trying to think of some of the other counties here close that touch us, but that is it for right now, the closer ones. But so, he's your nephew, did you say?
No, that's my first cousin.
Your first cousin, all right, great. Well, I'll tell him that I saw you.
I will be there in the heat.
Good, great, thank you, appreciate it.
I'm amazed that out of 114 kids, you can remember any name.
It's hard, I remember them now, but this time next year, I'll have to look at the roster again.
Only you said it.
Yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. So, but anyway, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob, appreciate it.
So, that's the only public comment we have tonight. So, at this time, let's move right on. This is my first meeting in the new order. Okay, that's what I'm looking at, Mr. Denuz. My first time doing the new order. I have my, my notes here, but I gotta follow the order, the outline for the agenda. So I'm, I'm gonna go back because I missed to call the roll call and prayer and pledge. So we called it to order. Mr. Denuz, will you please call for the? You did roll call?
We just did the prayer and pledge.
Okay. So, if you will, stand with me for the prayer and pledge. Mr. Chambers did such a good job, I thought everything was already laid out for me. All right. Gracious Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for what our eyes have seen and what our eyes are going to see, for we know that in your hands, all will be done for the city of Milledgeville, Baldwin County. We look forward to the great works that these minds that sit at this diocese will bring to the table. We thank you for our community who so graciously worked with us to make sure that we can be the best that we can be, to be all that we can be. And we thank you that you continue to send people here that want to live, work, and play and educate in this community. This and many more prayers we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. And so we've completed our public comments, and now we're gonna move on to the adoption of the minutes. So you all have received a copy of the August 8, 2023 council meeting minutes. Are there any changes that need to be made? If not, do I hear motion to adopt the minutes?
Motion to adopt the minutes.
Second. I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mount?
Aye.
Ms. Walden? Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
The minutes are adopted as official. At this time, I do have a few comments before we bring up our guest presenters for tonight. Mr. Griffin, that I want to bring out. We do need to get in a hurry and make sure we make the board appointments for the land bank authority. And my vision might be different from your vision, but I think on this board, it would serve us well if we put some bankers, some lawyers, real estate developers, and even if you all choose you want someone from this board to serve, and possibly a resident of the community giving us community input. So if we can be thinking about that and possibly looking at our next meeting of bringing some names to the table of who you would like to see appointed to this board, but I think until city and county put it together, then we're holding up the progress that can be made. And people are inquiring about when is this going to happen, because they want to be able to buy into the homes that the Habitat for Humanity will put on these properties. So please keep that in mind and be thinking about it and who you would like to see on the board and bring your input to the next meeting. I noticed we had a few things going on this afternoon on the student parking. I think we all need to make sure we're watching and looking at that and being able to help Mr. Griffin with some suggestions. I saw a few suggestions as I ran in today, but then I also want to put out that as I drive through this community on a school bus every day, it appears that it's becoming more and more students parking everywhere, that people will not be able to get to downtown, they won't be able to get to their eateries, that they want to get to the business owners. There's so much we're gonna have to think about and think with, with Mr. Griffin's expertise in what he wants to see done. I like the suggestions I saw made, but I do want you all to make sure you keep that in mind, and I know, I'm sure, Mr. Griffin, you're probably talking with Carly as well, on it, are you gonna get with her, maybe?
Not, not at this point in time, because really, the only request came for those two streets that I mentioned to you all that came from, from President Cox. I mean, I don't know that there's any way in particular we can prohibit students from parking downtown, it's just that the request was made by President Cox to look at those two streets and expand the, the time limit on those as a pilot. They've had, they have about 300 more freshmen this year than normal, and we could, we could look at that. I talked with Chief Swiker since, since we're on that. I talked to Chief Swiker this afternoon, and with our LPR system, we can very easily make those changes for those two streets. Some of you had some concerns with the possibility of increasing the citation fines on those streets. I learned something today that, that I thought was not the case in having a conversation with Chief Swiker. I was under the impression that there was a citation issued basically every hour after the two hours, and that is not the case. There's one citation issued for a two-hour period, and that is the citation for the day. So we are going to look at possibility, bringing some of that information to y'all to discuss that and also discuss with, with municipal court. I have shared with you all at the last meeting that I had a really good meeting with President Cox, and one of the things we talked about in that meeting was their officers routing their citations to municipal court as opposed to county court where they're currently going. And I will continue to have that conversation with her on that. That could be something that could be a part of this conversation in terms of parking anyway. I think Ms. Shinholster, Mr. Reynolds' point was well made about that might, if we double the fines on those two streets, that might push folks to downtown. And I was under the impression that the way I thought the tickets were being issued, that that would take care of itself, but based on what I learned today, that would not take care of itself. So I think there's some things that we have to look at to see if we in fact do that, but you know, we can, we can continue to discuss that. I'm wondering if, my only concern is I'm wondering if the full academic year might not be a little bit long to run the pilot, maybe we run the pilot fall semester and then look at the possibility of extending it during, during the academic year. I also want to have additional conversations with Georgia College about how they, they plan, if they in fact do, to put that information out, because I have some concerns with that becoming four-hour parking and it getting out to the students and then us having difficulty getting it back to two-hour parking if we need to, to make those parking spaces turnover. So there's still some things in the works, but since I had gotten that letter, I just wanted to share it with y'all, just for your information. I don't think I put this in the information I shared with y'all, but that's, that's about 96 parking spaces. There's not really that many spaces on West Green, because most of those are residential spaces, and that would not affect those, so the majority of those spaces are on Montgomery Street between Jefferson and, and Clark. And chances are that someone coming into the heart of downtown probably is not going to park on that street anyway. So I don't know that it would affect the turnover of the spaces downtown, but maybe what we do need to look at is the possibility of, of assessing and maybe changing some of the fine structure associated with those, those spaces, and we'll certainly be bringing that to y'all down the road and running it through Mr. Jordan and getting the approval of municipal court, the municipal court judge as well, so.
I do have one question I want to ask out of there. Is it still on the brain or backside of the brain that maybe Georgia College, you could talk to President Cox in your speaking about the parking deck, maybe a possibility since it continuously needs parking, that could happen?
I, I don't think that's in their plans right now. I mean, we, we could certainly continue to talk about it. There is a, she and I have been contacted by a hotel developer that's interested in a space downtown that I don't want to go into right now, but it, if, if that came to fruition, that might necessitate a, necessitate a parking deck that might be a part of that project, so.
That's fine. I just want to make sure it's still on the brain, it's a brain game, we're still thinking about.
I have a question, Mr. Griffin, with a couple of questions. The first one is, I, I know that a few years back when we were discussing parking and, and having some situations, and the college came to us and talked to us about their parking lots and that all students that were designated to park in a parking lot, and we were still having problems with them parking downtown rather than parking in their parking lots. And then I think that they came back and told us that they had made that a part of freshman orientation about the parking areas, how to get to them where they should park. And then, and when they were issued their parking details, they were designated to a parking lot. Now, is someone from the college checking to see if those students, I mean, is there any way that, that they can check to see if those students, because I know we had issues a lot of times where those students were not parking in those parking lots because it was further to walk?
Right.
In some cases than it was to park downtown. That, that's one question I, I'd like for you to find out, if that's still the case. And the second question is this, that I heard you say that, and I understand that although we cannot prohibit them from parking, is there any way that we can change the ordinance where it would deter them from parking? For example, you know, when you go on Tybee Island, there are signs everywhere about parking and, and dollar amounts and everything, and if you're not doing, you know, if you have no intent to obey the rules, then it kind of deter you from parking in those parking areas, and then you go and find somewhere where you can park. So you know, my thinking is that along with Carly and the merchant, perhaps we could change, you know, once we change the, the fees and everything, then we change, we add signage to deter from parking. We can't prohibit, but it would, you know, if we, if, if we made it so that it would deter students from parking, because some of them do. If you, if you are in our parking lot early in the morning, a lot of students fill up the top part of the, our parking lot to where if, if anyone couldn't find a parking space downtown, and that's public parking, back there, there's no parking spaces there or at the library most of the day, we all know that, because there are students parking in those parking spaces. And, and the same thing with downtown, when people need to park, when students come in in the morning, that's the first place that they stop. And then they, because it's easier to walk the main campus than to go around the corner and find their, their designated parking lot. So what, we need to start thinking about what we can do to deter that behavior.
And I, I mean, obviously, when I think about deterrence, I immediately think about increased fees?
Right.
Or fines.
But we have to have the signage to let them know that, because if I pull into a parking space and then I find out I might get a $400 fine, I guarantee you, I won't be parking there.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
You know, I mean, and that's what I'm thinking about, things like that.
I think that's a, I think that's a great idea. That, that kind of goes, you know, we looked at one point in time when Mr. Jarrett was here about surface street, paid surface street parking, and we, we, we had some hiccups with that and decided not to move forward with it, but what you're saying may take care of that without having to have the paid surface street parking. So I'm, I'm, I'm excited to hear your thinking, and we can certainly go that route. Do you want to mention anything about the slot back here and the conversations we've had?
I can. I have mentioned about our lot back here and that we don't even control it.
Right.
There's plenty of parking back there, and I, I talked to Carly a little bit about it. She actually went and talked to some of the South Wayne merchants to find out where they park. Some were parking back here, but very few, some were parking on the street and moving, and some were parking, you know, several blocks away and coming. And so I, my thought was designating some parking spaces back here for merchants in areas, and then also designating some parking spaces for shoppers.
I think that would be a great idea.
And we're basically providing, you know, another parking area for students, and this time, we're going from Georgia College to GMC, but nothing against them, Rob.
Yeah, no, no.
It's just a matter of trying to figure out how, how do you address all these different situations and, and you know, the, the mindset will always be what's the easiest will be done. And you know, wherever it's the closest space, somebody's gonna grab it.
That's right, absolutely.
And I think the only thing Georgia College Parking Services is doing, Ms. Shinholster, is, is checking those, checking their dec, or their passes based on making sure they're in the right lot on the campus. And they're doing everything there, there with LPR now too.
Okay.
So the, so the pass, parking pass is now built into the license plate, and they can tell when they go through with their LPR vehicle if they're parked in the wrong, in the wrong place. By the way, while we're talking, I'll just put this out on the table too, because it's, it's kind of come up to the top again as part of this conversation. Georgia College has come to me again to talk about the possibility of, of taking over North Liberty Street between Montgomery and Thomas. I told them, I said, well, we, we came up with a price for that at one point in time during the previous city manager administration. Here's what we said, but that was a long time ago, so I'm pretty sure the price has gone up by now. And I think my, my, my last conversation with Lee Frutiger, who is the vice president for Business and Finance at Georgia College, is they were looking at, at probably getting the property appraised, which they said they would have to do anyway, and then looking at maybe coming back to us. So that, that may be a possibility as well. If y'all remember the last time we made any agreement with them on North Liberty as well as the, I'm counting in my head, y'all, 300 block of South Wilkinson. We only agreed that they could utilize those spaces if, if they were spaces that faculty or students did not have to pay for, because we didn't want, not want them generating revenue on, on right of way. So that has continued to be the case there as well. But this, this letter came about because of some of the conversation that President Cox and I had, as well as John Jackson from Georgia College. And, but I, I, I really like the thought, Ms. Shinholster, what you mentioned of looking at some increased fines across the board.
And designating parking in the parking area there and off of the street, because when, as I walk in the morning and I get a chance to talk to Walter's merchants, and I say that because that's his district. So I always tell them, make sure that I get your compliments and stuff and then talk with you.
Well, if you remember, when we were looking at paid surface street parking, we even, we even set up zones where you had a two-hour parking zone, a three-hour parking zone, a four-hour parking zone, and that's something we could certainly look at doing too with the potential change in, in fines.
So I agree with you, I, because I, I know that in a hearing, you say that the chief says that that's one thing for the day. That's not how it was set up originally when we first started two-hour parking and took the, like, you know, parking meters up. That was not, it was two-hour parking, and then if you were still there, you got a fine.
Well, he and I were in agreement today that that would be changed.
Yeah, because that's not how it originated.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I ran with your comments.
I think we need to discuss that, since I saw the emails going back and forth, and I'm gonna ask one more question and we'll move on, so that you can get to our guests. The top area where Truist Bank, that no one parks at, is it not anything we can negotiate with them?
That belongs to them, and people park there, and they have no problem with anybody parking there, it's just, it's just too far for some people to walk.
So I was thinking, the businesses that are calling me and complaining, they could utilize that.
I looked at that parking lot, yeah. I was looking at that parking lot, the upper end of it anyway, and.
They do not patrol that lot, so anybody basically also park there, can.
And then also the lot across beside the post office.
I know we, we went out of a, I'm sorry, what was I missing out?
Yeah, trying to designate some of those spaces.
I know we did a lot during COVID to assist our businesses, but I hate to hear that they have, what does I say, DoorDash, Uber, and because where they have to be to get in front of the businesses to get the food, because everybody has taken up parking spaces, that we have to ticket them so much. You know, they can get as many as four or five tickets in one day is what I'm hearing. I don't know how true that is, but these are the calls that I'm.
It shouldn't be if they're not staying there more than two hours.
Yeah, they shouldn't be there that long.
Yeah, well, that's what they're saying, they're not there, but each time that they come back, and if they're there for a few minutes, they're ticketing them.
Can't, it can't be. I, I will, I will disagree with them on that, because if the LPR does not pick up their license plate over a two-hour period, they don't get ticketed.
Okay, so I, I want to know, I want to hear that from you, because as I get these calls and I have to email somebody back, I want to be able to email them or give them the correct information.
If they're staying there two hours, they're not making much money doing DoorDash.
Well, then, and very seldom, you're gonna get the same person.
I wouldn't want that mailed anyway.
There's a bunch of emailing stuff coming back and forth to me right now in reference to it. Okay, well, that's, those are the only notes I have for tonight, so at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Griffin for his presentations.
We have two presentations tonight. One is from Jonathan Jackson, the executive director of the Milledgeville Baldwin County Economic Development Authority. It's been some time since Jonathan has come and given us an update on what's going on with the authority, and he also asked to be able to come and speak to you all about a new project that he has going on with some regional partners in terms of trying to get the information about job openings in our community out. So Jonathan, come on up.
Good afternoon. Wanted to talk to you about a couple of things. First, I want to give you a little bit of a happy update on this flyer that, or this brochure that Bo was passing out. It's for a website called mcgieworks.com. I'm sure that you all get these questions as I do. When I tell people how many jobs are open in our county, they say, well, where are they? So at last check, mcgieworks.com, there were 1,017 job openings in Milledgeville and Baldwin County, 1,017 jobs. So what this website is, is an aggregator for job listings through several different search engines and things that are optimized for our area. People can visit this website, mcgieworks.com, and they can take a few easy steps to search the job openings that are there. And it's a little bit different, because if you're old like me, I expect to see a classified ad page with all the jobs. I used to have to help lay those things out, and I don't miss those days, but. So with this website, when you open it up, you click on a, a little button that says, are you looking for employment? And then you enter a county that you're looking in. Now, city council members and county commissioners do not like to hear this, but when it comes to jobs, borders are not as important anymore, because people commute to other places and from other places to come to work here. But if you're looking for a manufacturing job in Baldwin County, for example, when I printed this brochure, there were 42 openings, and those are either low-skilled or moderately skilled jobs, but all the jobs that are on this website that are. But all the jobs that are on this website that are listed from Milledgeville Baldwin County run the gamut from no-skill jobs and entry-level positions to certified or professional positions. So there's a lot there to choose from. But like I said earlier, there are 1,017 jobs open just a couple of weeks ago. And I just found out today, one of our largest employers is not even included on this website because they don't submit their jobs to that particular aggregator for search engines. So we're working to integrate them in also. So some of the roadblocks to our labor shortage right now are work ethic, refusal of initial pay, and those are things that we're finding out from getting our business retention and expansion surveys back from local businesses. They're having trouble filling people for some of those reasons. Sometimes people are unable to take or pass the drug screen, but other times people have a hard time getting to work. And so in the pamphlet, I listed information about Baldwin County Transit where people can book rides to work, home from work. And a lot of times when you get a larger employer, organically carpool, carpools for them. So that's great. And that's, it's something that we can count on once people get their foot in the door. But also, if you are looking for more specific job searches, I listed some resources on the back here that we also encourage people to use, including indeed LinkedInmonster.com and the Department of Labor, of course. I would point out that most of our larger employers have their own employer page, employee page on their website or employment page on the website where you can search the jobs that they have open and apply many times online. If you are displaced through a layoff or through some, some other incident, our Middle Georgia Consortium can offer displaced worker training or other types of job training to help you get equipped for another job that might be open in the area. That information's included on the back of the brochure. And if there, if it's in your desire to go back to school and learn some new skills to fit into a career change or just a avenue that you'd like to go down or maybe enrich the resources or enrich the skills that you currently have for jobs, I listed the three institutes of higher learning that we have that can work with you there. Georgia College GMC and Central Georgia Tech. I'm a big believer in technical colleges. I believe that they are where we need to be focusing our resources at the moment for employee, for manufacturing employees. They do a really good job of tailoring curriculum to fit particular manual skills that I remember from being in school as vocational skills. So we can, we can count on them to do that. But we also have a lot of programs at our junior college, at GMC Junior College, that work to transition employees that are existing into management roles. And we also have a lot of talent that comes through and leaves us sometimes at Georgia College and especially in the business school. So we're working to strengthen those relationships there. And I have to applaud our Institutes of Higher Learning for attempting to puncture the bubble that sometimes can surround the schools when it comes to the local community. That's a very good thing that they're doing. Lastly, I wanted to mention that Georgia is about to relaunch the Georgia Work Ready Program. If you remember when Governor Perdue was in office, Georgia Work Ready was a big deal. You could test and you could place in one of four categories, bronze, silver, gold, or platinum, and use that as an accolade for your resumes or companies could use it to identify talent. So we're relaunching the program statewide. And the only difference this time will be that the test before was free. This time it will have a small fee attached to it. So we're looking at areas to try and cover that fee for people who want to take the tests because some people may not have a problem coming up with $39 to take the test. Some people might. It's not an insignificant amount of money. So we're looking at a couple of different things. Our partners over at Macon Bibb are exploring using Perkins funding through their College and Career Academy and through their technical college system to do that. So we're, we're looking to travel down that road. I'm working hand in hand with Natalie Stowe at College and Career Academy to try and find those avenues. But I just wanted to point out that if you get questions from constituents about jobs and where we can find jobs, McGee works is a good place to start. We'll be at the Chamber Employ Baldwin Job Fair on August 31st with a booth to help people get acquainted with the website. And hopefully we'll be able to help people get to work because in economic development, I take my job responsibilities as sometimes just twofold. Build the tax digest and create jobs. And I'm really concerned about helping people get to work and continue to work. So those are the tasks that we're undertaking now for our workforce development. Do y'all have any questions about McGee works or anything that we're doing as far as our workforce development goes?
How can the city list jobs on here? Through the aggregator or what?
Yeah, I'll tell you what, I'll send you a link to the, to the proper channels to, that will, will put those jobs on there. It's nothing you have to subscribe to. They pull from other aggregators. And of course, the quality of the results are only as good as the quality of what goes in. And so if jobs are outdated on these, when they're entered and they don't have an expiration date, they may show up. So there may be old jobs that are posted. But most of the time, these search engines have an expiration on the job listings, so they come off after they've been posted for a certain amount of time. So I'll get you the information on how to make sure that they're included.
Good, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, well, I've got, I'll give you a little bit of an economic development update now since we've got the workforce stuff out of the way. I don't have any data to compare it to, but I can tell you that I don't think that we've ever seen a period of economic development that's been this robust in Milledgeville, Baldwin County. We are currently working nine active projects. And we've got eight expansions and nine projects. And I've got two projects that I can't announce yet. So we are on, we're on track this year for about 784 new jobs in Milledgeville, Baldwin County and about $564 million in total investment. So we, thank you, we're really working hard to get these done. In addition to those active projects that we've got going, I want to offer a little bit of differentiation on those. These are not just projects where the state has said, hey, I'm working Project X and we're interested in Milledgeville, Baldwin County. We've retooled our whole reporting system so that those are now referred to as RFIs or inquiries. The projects that I'm listed, they're actual projects that are underway right now as we speak. They're not what-ifs, they're not pie in the sky, they're happening. So we're really, really proud. And I do appreciate working with our Board of Directors on those and our local officials. But in addition, we've got nine RFIs that are listed, and those are projects that come in through the state that come in and take a look at our community and ask questions. And got one today just before I came here. So we're up to 10 that are looking. I want to say that I have had great success working with the city on some of these projects. When I've had questions about water capacity, about service, and how capacity can be handled, Robert has never failed to immediately just give me an answer. And it's been great to have that responsiveness from the city. So I appreciate that also. And I believe that's just about it for my updates. If y'all have any questions that I can't answer, I will. Of course, y'all know that we're private.
Has there been any, any projects that you have not pursued? I mean, that.
We had one that would have eaten up all of the excess water capacity. And I mean, all of it. It would have left like maybe 50,000 gallons per day on the permit, on the permitted amount. I mean, it was just massive, massive, massive water user. And we could not get the results that we would need without further testing. And because of the timeframe, we withdrew from that project. That was just a while back. And it was right after the city had had an outage that was a pretty extensive one. And I think it might have been misinterpreted that that's the reason that we withdrew from that project, but that was not the reason we withdrew from the project. We withdrew because of the large capacity that it would have used. Not saying that we couldn't have handled the project, but it would have taken a lot of testing that we just didn't have time, the company just didn't have time for. So we.
So it was the company that didn't have time.
Right. And we don't know if we had the capacity or not because we never went as far as to test. It would have been difficult to deliver, even given the permitted amounts, it would have been difficult to deliver an assurance in the timeframe that we could provide that much.
Well, I know we used to supply for the city and the county, so.
Well, we withdraw from projects from time to time when we can't meet their, their goals. Sometimes they need a rail-served site that's got, that's pad-ready. Well, we don't have anything like that. We don't have a rail-served site that's already flat and ready to go. We do have a lot of inquiries for that Sibley Smith property that's out there. We withdraw from a lot of inquiries on that because it's not where it needs to be in terms of development. There's too, it's too raw. When these companies come in, they're looking for as much done ahead of time, as many boxes checked as possible. And that property is just a few years away from where we need it to be. But we're working diligently to try to keep moving it that way. We're putting a lot of effort into the Milledgeville Baldwin County Industrial Park. We've got that pad-ready site that is 44 acres. I will tell you that we were getting a lot of companies that were looking for the 50 to 200 acres on, for their building footprints. Well, that Daniel site came in at 44 acres. So if they're sitting behind a computer, searching for a site that's 50 acres, their site may have fit on 44, but they would never, they would never see it because it was in as 44 acres. So I don't know if you remember the old Bugs Bunny cartoons where he took the goal line and just slid it over a little bit. I redrew the site, so it's now 96 acres. We're getting, we're getting a lot more hits on it.
Good deal, good deal.
Which areas are receiving the most interest and activity for new development? Light manufacturing, logistics?
I'm getting the most inquiries, well, until I redrew the lines, I was getting the most inquiries on Sibley Smith. And it's largely driven by electric vehicle manufacturing and automotive suppliers. Because if you think about it, we're in the middle between Hyundai and Rivian. And so that's really the driving thing in Georgia right now. But we are, we're trying to make sure people know about the Milledgeville Baldwin Industrial Park. And so since we've retooled our marketing materials, I'm getting a lot of inquiries on the Milledgeville Baldwin County Industrial Park. And that pad-ready site is driving a lot of it. It was a good move to invest so much money into getting that site ready because, like I said, they're looking to get to market quickly these days and having all these things done ahead of time helps. So we're in the middle of collecting proposals for commercial real estate appraisals because we've had placeholder amounts per acre for all of our properties, but companies need to know a more accurate price per acre when they're looking for these properties, not just so they can get free property, which is becoming less and less likely this day and time, but so they can justify their case to their companies to say, look, this property's worth, you know, $200,000 an acre and we're getting it for 100. That's a deal. That makes our project more profitable in the long run. So we're trying to give them an accurate amount. And even when we do that, just to give you a crash course on how we develop our offers for companies that come in, we never base that offer on anything other than data. There's never an arbitrary number pulled out of the air. It's always based on an economic impact. We look at the economic impact and then we look at the taxing agencies to see what the effect will be on that agency. And our goal is to have everybody in the black year one, meaning that every taxing entity receives enough funding to cover the resources that would go into that company being there. So I guess maybe that's a conservative approach, but that's how I do it. That's how our board does it. And we've got a good, we've got a great board, really good board. They're very, very much involved and they very much are knowledgeable about the process. So if anybody approaches you and says, you know, we're just giving taxes away to get people here. No, we're not. We've got one active tax abatement in Baldwin County right now. That's it. There's only one company receiving a break on their taxes. And we did that as a means of attraction to get them here. And even their break on taxes is very conservative. It's, it's not, it's not a giveaway. So we're working hard to get people to work. That's my driver. So if you ever want to know what makes me tick, it's getting people jobs.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
We appreciate you and I appreciate you coming and updating us. That means a lot. Thank you.
Okay, next, Mayor Copeland contacted Freddie Broome, Georgia Municipal Association's Director of Equity and Inclusion, sometime back to come down and have a conversation with her and me about what was necessary to become a certified City of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, a certification that GMA has recently put together. And in the course of that conversation, the three of us along with someone else out of Freddie's office discussed the executive summary for that certification program. And that was passed out to you all last Tuesday night as well as a resolution sample that could be used if you all decided this was something that you all wanted to pursue. We thought it would be a good idea for Freddie to come down and share some information with y'all on the program, give you the opportunity to ask any questions that you had of him. And he was able and willing to come back tonight. So Freddie, welcome to Milledgeville.
Well, good evening. Like I say, I'm Freddie Broome and I will say Georgia Municipal Association because the last time I did a presentation in one of our cities, I said GMA and someone stopped me in the hall and said, you work for Good Morning America? I know everyone up here knows what GMA is, but I'm just Georgia Municipal Association. And so I want to talk briefly about our Embrace Program, which is a program that we have at GMA that we created back in 2021. And it is our diversity, equity, inclusion program. So I want to do a quick, as I say, a 30-minute elevator, 30-second elevator speech on what diversity, equity, inclusion is because I think it's so important to make sure everybody understands when GMA says it, what it really means. We can't speak for everyone else. But at GMA, when we talk about diversity, we're not just talking about race. Diversity is more than race and we want to make sure everybody understands that. So if you want to create a community where people want to live, work, and play, you have to value all the diversity in your community. That means everyone that is different. And so that's what get everyone to understand, valuing the differences. Equity is something that we get, teach everyone to understand. Equity is so important. A lot of people think equity is about unfairness, but it's really about creating opportunities for fairness. And the reason why we always talk about diversity first before we talk about equity is that when we talk about equity, if you look around the room, I'm going to tell you a quick example how equity is about fairness. If you look around the room, look at everyone that has on glasses or contact lens, can't see the contact lenses, but wearing glasses. Everyone that's wearing glasses, that's called equity. We just don't call it that. Because what equity does, it creates opportunity for you to have the same opportunity as someone else despite your differences. So those that are wearing glasses, your differences, is whether it's nearsighted, farsighted, wearing, like tonight when I go back to Atlanta, I have to put on my glasses, I can't see at nighttime, or whether I'm reading. But there's something about my vision that makes your vision different of someone that doesn't require the glasses. And that's what equity is. And so when we start talking about being more equitable, we're getting everyone to understand it's about creating opportunity for fairness despite differences. And then inclusion is important. So we make sure everybody understands what inclusion is because inclusion is fine way to bring everyone together despite their differences. You know, like when we talked about the colleges, you have three different colleges in your areas and all three of them are extremely important. And so you start talking about how do we grow our city, how do we support our city? You have to have all three of the colleges at the table because that's important to make sure that everyone feels included and valued within your community. And that's what diversity, equity, inclusion is. And then belonging is just creating a space where people feel like they can be themselves, where they belong. When I visited last week, I walked downtown, several people was like, hello, how you doing? You know, you was making me feel welcome. If I had to walk downtown and people was turning their heads to me and not speaking to me when Hank and the mayor asked me to come back, I'm like, I don't know about that. I may have sent somebody else. I don't feel welcome in your community. But you know, that's what belonging is. And that's the feeling I got when I came down here. Everybody was saying hello. And that's what belonging is about. And so that's why it's so important to understand what diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is about. And it creates your communities where people want to live, work, and play. And so that's why we created our Certified City of D E I N B to help our cities create these communities where people are being valued because they're different. People are understanding the importance of creating equitable opportunities, working within your community, making sure that everybody in your community is receiving the exact same service despite their differences. And so with this program, there are four tiers. There's a bronze, a silver, a gold, and a platinum. And so each city, you can decide, you know, which tier that you want to go in. There are seven categories, but you have to participate in one category, and that is community and stakeholder engagement. Because we understand importance that if you really want to embrace diversity and create inclusive community, it all starts in the community. And so that's why we make that a requirement. But once you get that requirement, then you can choose to do two, three, four, five, six, or seven categories. And the other categories are workforce housing, education, health and wellbeing, community stakeholder engagement is another category, that's a required one, economic development and community development, and workforce housing. And I missed one.
Education.
I guess if I look at my notes, I can figure it out. I guess if I look at my notes, I can figure it out. Education and, oh, municipal workforce development. And so those are the seven categories, and public safety. And those are the seven categories that you can decide to do. Right now, we have five cities that are interested in it. Some cities are saying we just want to start off with two categories, and then we want to build off of that. Some cities are, we have one city right now, they're saying they want to start off with seven. But we have a meeting with them next week with the city manager and the mayor, and they're going to look and see if they really can handle all that at one time. So I usually recommend one, I usually recommend two to three, because you have to do it one, two to three categories, and look at the categories that you feel you're doing well in. One requirement is that you have to adopt a resolution to say that we're committed, that we want to do this. And then once you adopt the resolution, you have to have proof that you've had two community stakeholder engagement meetings within one calendar year. And then once you do that, you'll start going through our process, and then once you go through the process, we have external reviewers that we call subject matter experts in these different categories. They'll look over the application, they'll tell us, okay, everything looks good, we approve it, then we'll look over it, we'll approve it, and then once we approve it, then that's when we recognize you as a Certified City of DNIB in whichever category that you selected to go through. But it's, it's a great program. It's really about bringing our communities together and making our communities stronger. And that's why we created Embrace Program. And if you can see, we have an image here on the Embraceability, you can see our image, and what our image is, we developed that logo, is the state of Georgia. And it has all the hands, and you can see their hands going throughout the state. And that's what we're realizing, that if we want to make our state better, it's a great state, but if we want to make it better, we got to find ways for everyone to come together, embrace each other's differences, and work together to make our state the great state that it is. So I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have about that. And one last thing, I know I'm supposed to talk about the Certified City DNIB, but I also want to briefly mention, I had Hank hand these out as well, that Millersville is not one of our cities of civility, and we would love for you to be one of our cities of civility. We just approved one yesterday, so right now we have 90 cities across the state of Georgia that has taken the pledge to say, we understand that there are times we're going to disagree. But just because we disagree, we still know how to disagree with one another. We still need to be civil towards one another, and respectful towards one another, and do the work that we were elected to do. And that's what our Embraceability Program is about. And that's simple. You don't have to go through a process. All you have to do is say that this is something we're committed to, and you, we have a sample resolution, use the resolution that, that we provide for you, you make whatever changes to it, submit it to us, we look over, we make sure you make too many changes to the resolution, and then we'll prove it. And then we'll recognize you as a city of civility. And like I said, right now, we have 90 cities that are cities of civility, and we also extended it, and we have organizations as well, that we have, Mill Georgia Regional Commission is going to be one of ours, and we have GMA, and there are two other regional commissions that have also embraced our civility initiative, and they have been recognized as an organization of civility. So our goal is to get our cities involved, expand it to our regional commissions, even reach out to our counties, and eventually even to our institution, university systems as well, as we try to make our state say, you know what, we know that we're different, and we're going to have disagreements, but that still doesn't mean we can't do the work that we need to do. And that's what civility is about. And thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
What size is your staff?
One-person show.
I had a feeling that might be the situation.
Yeah, and since 2000.
You have a huge job.
Yes. And since 2020, 21, I mean, we're excited because it's a lot of work, and I do a traveling all across the state, because I represent all 537 cities. We have done almost 400 programs, and I've directly trained almost 10,000 individuals.
Wow.
Through, through our programs. And we're excited, we created our municipal leader program, and your city manager Hank, he actually was participating in our first cohort. He graduated from that program, and our next program is scheduled to start in October, and your mayor will be in that program as well. So thank you for your support for our Embrace Programs as well.
I'd just like to say I like your nine pillars of civility, especially where it says, remember the acronym Q-TIP. Quit taking it personal.
Yes. Yes. And I also noticed that one of the acronyms, I mean, one of the pillars is be kind, and I handed out some pins. Did you see, get the pins? Okay. I got, I gave Hank some pins to also hang out, because this is one of the things I started doing. It was I go to council meetings, I hand out pins. When I go to conferences, last week I was at a small city conference, and I was handing out pins, because I realized that one of the most genuine acts that we can do to be civil towards one another is be kind. You know, so let's spread the word about working together, being kind to one another. So, you know, don't just talk about it, wear your pins and be about it.
That's it, that's it. I'm with you on that. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Broome. I think we'll be speaking as a group on this and trying to get it moving. I think as we spoke, you all, we realized we were already doing some things well, especially in our law enforcement area. We're working in our education, our health and wellbeing, we spoke about that. And we do see people at the table. We have our stakeholders coming in, being at the table. So that's a great thing. And we wish you safe travels back home tonight. Thank you so much for coming, and we'll be getting back with you.
All right, thank you. Everyone have a good night.
All right, I will continue on with my report. Freddie did give me pins for all of you all, but I'm going to keep them all and strategically place them around the office, so when you all come in to talk to me, I can put one on.
Be kind. You need bigger pins.
Now, I want to, I want to say for the public that's here, that's, that's not anything that there's an issue with in, in city hall across the board, but especially with the folks that I work with every day, I'm, I'm very appreciative and very honored and humbled and blessed to work with these folks that are on this die, so that I appreciate that opportunity. Speaking of belonging and making people feel welcome, we got about 1,900 brand-new freshmen last week at Georgia College, and I'm not really sure how many came, how many cadets came, Rob?
The largest, I think, about 250, six, I believe.
Wow, okay.
One of the largest that they had.
Yeah, yeah, so a bunch of new, as I say, a bunch of new little children around town. And Chris and Stacy Lumley and the folks in the TV area at Georgia College, as well as what used to be called Public Relations, I can't remember the fancy name they have for it anymore, but they contacted the city about the possibility of doing something to make the students feel welcomed to our city during their convocation. And I want to show you what the end result of that was, so you can look at your screens and.
Good morning. I'm Walter Reynolds, a fellow Bobcat and your city council representative. It's my pleasure to welcome you, Millersville, as you embark on this exciting new chapter in your life. While you're here, be sure to spend time exploring the natural beauty of this great community. Visit Lake Sinclair, kayak the O'Conde River, hike Bart from Forest, and see all there is to see beyond the bounds of this college campus. Spend time working with nonprofits and faith-based organizations to build a better community and become a real citizen of Millersville. Again, welcome to Millersville and welcome to Georgia College.
Thunder, hey, I'm so excited to see you. I have some amazing things to talk to you about. We are so excited about this new class coming in this fall. Come on in. Thunder, we have so much going on for our new Bobcats. I'm so excited to have them here. We have shopping, dining, some amazing things downtown. Do you know we have over 15 restaurants? You can get pizza wings, Greek, Indian, even Korean barbecue. The shopping is great, too. We have things like home decor, there's clothing options, and for the students and families, there's even Georgia College swag at Barnes &amp; Noble, so it's really great to get clothes or any kind of stickers and things like that you can get at Barnes &amp; Noble downtown. So Thunder, one of the bigger things that we do every month is our first Friday. Fridays are so fun down. We have a different kind of theme each month. September is going to be a movie night. That movie night will be a double feature, so we will have two movies, one that will be more family-friendly earlier, and then one that'll be a perfect date night. Another awesome event is October 6th, we have wrestling, and it's semi-professional wrestlers. We have a whole wrestling ring that's going to be set up in the parking lot where the Deep Roots Merrill is. It is an amazing event. It's a spectacle, to say the least, and people really enjoy it. And November is, we're actually partnering with Georgia College for a Touch a Truck event on Oakins and Street, and that one is just a bunch of different vehicles. We have emergency vehicles, but we're also going to bring, bringing in like big monster trucks and things like that. And then we have December, that is our tree lighting, our annual tree lighting. We close one block of downtown Millersville, and it's a really, really fun time, nice way to tick off the holidays and get ready for all of the holiday shopping and things like that. So we really encourage all the college students to come to the Millie Market and support our local vendors at the Pavilion downtown, and that was the first and third Friday from December. And let's not forget about the Deep Roots Festival on October 21st, because that is a seriously amazing day for Millersville as a whole. We close the entire downtown, every street is open to fresh freedom, and. Blue travelers, which some of our Georgia College students might be too young, but if they ask their parents, they're going to remember it, and we think that everyone is going to really enjoy that concert. We have lots of opportunities for recreation in Millersville as well. We have the Settler Irwin Nature Preserve, and we have Barnes &amp; Forest. Both are beautiful areas for just outdoor recreation and enjoyment. And then we also have a Coog Greenway. That is just an amazing area. You can go kayaking down the river, there is fishing of course, and then we also just have lots of great trails around the river, great place for people to enjoy. Another great place is Lockerly Arboretum. That is close to downtown as well, and a great place to just explore and be in nature. There's different nature walks, and it's just a good area for some outdoor fun. Let's not forget beautiful Lake Sinclair, just a few miles away, you can't miss it on your way in, but it's an opportunity for swimming, fishing, and water sports. Thunder, it's been so nice to talk to you, and as you can see, Millersville has so much to offer. We cannot wait for our new Bobcats to enjoy Millersville as much as we do. Thank you for coming, and it was great talking with you.
Carly said it was very difficult talking to someone that could not talk back to you. Some of you may remember back in late May, we were all, all of us received an email from Dr. Nicholas Creel from Georgia College, asking about the possibility of the city participating in a grant application where they were seeking to establish a solar power design and installation certificate program. And through you all's email and verbal approval, we did submit a letter of support for that. No financial support, just a matter of saying that the city would work with the college in order to do that, that the city would have someone that was a contact for the organization that were providing these grant funds. And from, from the program existed and still exists the possibility of one of our city buildings being fitted with solar panels by the program participants. So we sent the letter of support in. If, just as, as, as a reminder to you, basically, the project focused on partnering with the city to launch a certificate program in solar power systems, combined with business education for aspiring entrepreneurs and the green energy sector. The anticipated outcomes would include workforce development, economic growth, increased clean tech adoption, and a replicable model for the southeastern United States by providing this hand-on experience. This is headed by three faculty members from Georgia College, Nicholas Creel, who's Assistant Professor of Business Law and the Director of the Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, Hashida Mahagbuk, I believe I pronounced that right, Associate Professor of Physics in the College of Arts and Sciences, and Rue Kang, who is a Professor of Mathematics and Secondary Education in the College of Education. So it's a, it's across the curriculum at Georgia College in terms of the faculty members that are a part of it. So on August the 10th, we learned that the grant application and proposal that was submitted had been approved. The grant actually ended up being titled, "A Workforce Development Study in Solar Technology and Eco-Entrepreneurship for the Greater Millersville Region." It was chosen to be funded as one of the 2023 Georgia Smart Communities Challenge Clean Tech Cohort, Individuals in the Cohort. So they are planning an announcement event on the afternoon of September 6th in Statesboro. You all will be receiving invitations to that. The best they have been able to share with us at this point in time is it most likely will be sometime between 1:00 and 3:00. I will plan to be going, and would love for as many of you all that can to go down with us to, to be a part of the announcement with the other groups that are being funded. So I'm excited about that, excited about seeing what the end result of that will be, and I'll be in contact with you as I get more information from the folks at the Partnership for Inclusive Innovation, since they are the ones planning the announcement. I shared some information with you via email last week, just reminding you that we are telling you that we would again consider Ordinance 2308-10 for the second reading, for the budget amendment for the library that I explained to you two weeks ago. And the reason for that, I'll be happy to take any questions that you may have about that, if you have any at this point in time. And also, I shared with you information on Resolution R2308-37. That's the one dealing with our health insurance at the city. I was very happy to get that information and see that it had only gone up 3%. Was happy and surprised, all at the same time. If you remember, we, we always budget in a 10% increase in our insurance by funding it 5%, half of one fiscal year, and 5% the other half of fiscal year. So we have, we have funded that in the budget that you all passed in June with, as I say, with some gravy on the biscuit, and we may need that gravy. We're still waiting on dental insurance rates. We anticipate that those probably will go up somewhere, what, Senator, around 2.5%, probably somewhere along in there. The good thing is what we provide to employees through Guardian for long-term disability that the city pays 100% of for the employees, that is remaining the same. And the voluntary vision and voluntary short-term disability that city employees have the opportunity to purchase, the rates for that are staying the same as well. And we anticipate, as I said, that dental will probably go up. But the way dental has been working, the rates that they set are typically for two years. So if it does go up, hopefully it will be at that level between January 1, 2024, and December 31, 2025. So Mayor, that's, that's all I'm going to take time to share with y'all. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you all have about anything I've discussed about, or anything else that, that you all would like clarification or additional information Yes, thank you, Bo. Bo reminded me, he and I had a conversation this afternoon, and I told him I would do it, and then I forgot, so thanks. So thanks, Bo. Just reminder that qualifying for the GMC Board of Trustees seat for District Four is currently going on and will be going on until four thirty.
Four thirty.
Friday.
Thursday.
Okay.
Twelve Friday.
At this point in time, we have had no one qualify. So as you're talking to folks through the community that would be interested in serving their community and live in District Four, please let them know that qualifying for that is open at this present time. You all approved the ordinance for that two weeks ago. Two ads have been running the paper, notification of election and of qualifying. And I appreciate the work that Bo and Mr. Jordan did to get that ready to be able to go on the ballot when the T-SLOSS goes on the ballot in November.
Okay, so right along into our old business. And first thing on the agenda tonight for the old business is. We have two public hearings and a budget amendment. However, we have been informed of a scheduling conflict for ordinance O dash twenty-three oh six dash oh six and have been asked to remove the ordinance from the agenda without prejudice. If the ordinance is removed without prejudice, it will start the whole process from beginning with an application. If there are no objections and at the request of the applicant, the chair will entertain a motion to remove ordinance O dash twenty-three oh six dash oh six from the agenda without prejudice.
So moved.
Second.
Properly motioned in second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Can I ask something? You said that they asked to be.
Are there any other questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mapp?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds, Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
The ordinance is removed. We're ready to proceed to the public hearing to consider ordinance O dash twenty-three oh six dash oh five to allow a special use at twenty-six fifty-one North Columbia Street for a car lot in the CC district. The procedure for conducting this public hearing will be as follows. Once it has been determined that the public hearing has been properly posted and advertised, the clerk will read the proposed amendment to the Land Development Code by caption. We will then hear the zoning report, including the advisory decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Counsel will first hear from the applicant and anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment. We will then hear from anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment. If anyone speaks in opposition to the amendment, we will then give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal. But the rebuttal must be limited to the points or issues raised by the opposition. We will then give the opposition the opportunity to speak in rebuttal. They too must limit comments to the points or issues raised. Please make sure that you come to the podium to speak and that you give your name and address for the record. Mr. Clerk, has this public hearing been correctly posted and advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it has been.
I will ask the clerk to read the ordinance by caption.
An ordinance amending the ordinance passed and adopted on the tenth day of December two thousand and two, known as the Land Development Code of the city of Millageville, Georgia. The ordinance grants a special use for a car lot with twenty-six vehicles located at twenty-six fifty-one North Columbia Street.
At this time, I will recognize Ms. Witherspoon for a zoning report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This property is located at twenty-six fifty-one North Columbia Street and is currently zoned commercial. And as we know, all car lots require a special use. So the applicant is requesting to have a car lot with no more than twenty-six cars. And this matter was brought before the Planning and Zoning Board and was unanimously approved to allow a special use.
Thank you, Ms. Witherspoon. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of the amendment? Come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Darrell Palmer. I currently own All Credit Car Sales, so very familiar with the business. Been in the business fifteen years now.
Excuse me, state your address as well.
My address, my home address is two oh seven Hudson Drive, Millageville, Georgia, right off of Law Cabin. And like I said, I've been in this business about fifteen years, very familiar. I just want to expand a little bit. And as I said in the previous meeting, that it's going to be only for cars to sell, no working on cars. I have a lot now that I'm currently, turn that into my shop so that when I move to North Columbia, I want to keep it just for selling cars. Thank you.
So you're moving, you're not going to have the other lot anymore?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Trying to move a little bit.
Thank you for the clarification on that.
One question, what is the access point to this lot?
The access point is going to be off of Marshall Drive.
Okay.
It's already deeded and everything.
You have easement or is it?
Yes, they have an easement that's already been adopted on the plan.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Palmer. Is there anyone present who wishes, who would like to speak in opposition of the amendment? There being none, then, if. Is there anyone on counsel who would like to ask questions or make comments? Being none, that concludes the presentation of evidence. Is there a motion?
Oh, no. I make a motion that we accept the finding of the D and D Board and approve as requested.
Second.
All right, well, as the clerk has been properly motioned in second, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mapp?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. I will ask the clerk to read ordinance O dash twenty-three oh eight dash ten by caption.
An ordinance to amend the twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four fiscal year annual operating budget allocation to the Mary Vincent Memorial Library.
This is the second reading of this ordinance. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Being none, I will ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mapp?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
The motion carries and the ordinance is adopted. We move to new business and I will ask the clerk to read Resolution R dash twenty-three oh eight dash thirty-one by caption.
Authorize the city of Millageville to participate in the Georgia Municipal Association's Georgia Municipal Employee Benefit System Life and Health Program for the twenty twenty-four calendar year.
You have heard the resolution. Is there a motion to adopt?
Oh, no. Second.
Is there any discussion? Being none, I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mapp?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
The resolution is adopted. We don't have any alcohol license applications, but we do have one appointment tonight. At the request of Allied Arts, I'm nominating Tyrone Evans to the Allied Arts Board. Is there a motion to confirm this nomination?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, who did? I think I heard you. Was it you, Dr. Lee or Ms.? Dr. Lee? Okay, I want to. All right. You got that, Ms. Dunus?
I have a motion by Dr. Lee and a second by Mr. Reynolds.
Correct. So there being no discussion, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll on that.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Mapp?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Is there any need for us to go into closed session tonight? Are there any comments or announcements from counsel? I want to thank all of you all for coming out and sharing in with the counsel tonight. I want to say for those that could not attend Ms. Shinholster's father's ceremony on Saturday, it was extremely nice and well put together. And I have shared it several times on my Facebook page. Did we put it on the city at all? Did not, okay.
But we certainly can.
Let's do that, please, if you don't mind.
Who has the footage?
Ms. Shinholster. All right, then, this concludes tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Ms. Mapp?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.